Ready?
Yep.
Alright. Wow, okay. Call the meeting to order Monday the sixteenth at seven oh four PM. Alright, first order of business, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Kirk. Yes, President?
Yes.
Josh.
Erica.
Yeah.
Brian.
Here.
Jeff.
David.
Here.
Here.
From men's, but in case I lose my voice. Um, is a meeting been properly notified?
Yep, meeting is properly noticed and it is being recorded per policy.
Welcome to visitor. Maybe some more over there. Okay. Um, any public comments? Anyone online? Hello? Okay. Alright. Right on time.
Yeah.
Next up, highlight on youth, the eighth grade Washington DC trip.
Okay.
Feel free to adjust the height however you like, but it's got a button on the right hand to lower and 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 raise the whole. There you go.
Oh.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
Wow. Okay. Guys can hear me okay? Okay, um, I'm Luke Pressey, Washington DC Coordinator and um, I'm thrilled to be standing in front of you uh, with the Washington DC trip three four on. Um, I remember it was early April and I was in here and uh, asking all of you to look over some COVID protocol stuff and talking about what our hopes were and I guess at that time I, in the back of my mind as I was talking, I I just, there were so many obstacles making it work and um, and we did and so I gotta, there's quite a few people to thank for that and it took a lot. It's not, not an easy deal. Um, I'll try to keep it to about five minutes and just kind of give you a rundown of what we did and um, things we did differently too and so, I guess um, first of all, I guess thanks, thanks all of you for supporting the trip. Um, one thing we know about in DC is there not a lot of school groups out there. Um, so we made it work on the road view to do so. Um, we had unbelievable chaperones this year. We had uh, we had twenty, twenty-nine total, including our teachers, but um, leading up between when, when I left you guys and when we went on the trip, um, we delivered all that, that COVID protocol and I was worried that our, you know, I didn't know how that would be taken by our parents. Um, and we still ended up having a hundred and sixteen students uh, going on the trip. And it said a lot about the parents and our great putting a lot of faith in us to go do this. Uh, we were at about eighty percent of the entire eighth grade class that went, which is close, usually right around ninety, but it was, this is our biggest group that we got brought out there, high five. And um, our, our chaperone parents were getting up early multiple days to try to secure uh, timed tickets to museums in a window of about two minutes at most. So they're up at about six forty-five in the morning, seven o'clock, they're on their computer trying to get Holocaust tickets, archives tickets, Smithsonian tickets, and we were able to get enough to get all of our kids through every major museum that was open in DC. I, I honestly didn't think we'd be able to get in the Holocaust museum at all and every one of our kids got to go through the Holocaust museum, which is a huge goal of ours. Um, the eighth grade team that I work with was incredible. We had, we had everybody that went. So Pat Hook, John Lee Buckel, um, Taylor Moe, Jeremy Gibson, Mark Friend Weber, Dee Dee Koss. There was one night where we were up till two o'clock in the morning, uh, still working on stuff, making sure that our kids are taken care of and that we're good to go the next day. So, um, we had, our teachers took on more kids and would be more flexible throughout the trip than it maybe ever. Um, so there's just a lot of, a lot of different groups to thank that made it happen. We'll drop there. Brad Wester, whoever your gives us about a thousand bottles of water, without Brad's premium waters, water we got, about a hundred degrees some days, ninety-five to a hundred, it was um, that'd be brutal. Okay, so and a bunch of you guys have been on that trip, so you know how much walking we do and what we like in the heat. So, um, as far as, as far as the trip itself, um, we took four buses for the first time out to DC. Um, because we ended up having every single person test negative for COVID, we were good to go uh, mask before the bus, which was nice for all on that drivers. Um, we, our first day out there, we were in Gettysburg like we normally are. Uh, our first day in Washington DC, our groups toured all the monuments in the Washington Mall area. Um, and then in the Holocaust museum in the afternoon and for the first time we went to uh, up to Ori- to Baltimore, watching Orioles game, the National, we're at Paul's, so we were able to go to Baltimore, Camden Yard, which is a beautiful stadium and, they actually let us um, they had ushers there that moved us down multiple sections so we were closer to the field. So that was kind of a cool thing. Um, Wednesday, when we were out there, we went to Mount Vernon, which is George Washington's estate, which is something we normally do. Um, Air Force Colonel Retired Tom Q took us on a tour of the Pentagon Memorial with planes hit at nine eleven. Uh, those of you that have heard this, you talked through this before, some of this, a lot of this stuff sounds the same. That's a good sign. Means that we did a lot of the same stuff and that's a good, good thing. Um, our Linton National Cemetery that Wednesday afternoon, we hustled up and saw changing in the guard right away, the two unknown soldier, um, and had time to tour some other parts of it. And then on Thursday, I normally go to the Capitol. Capitol's closed this year. Uh, we went to Great Falls National Park that morning and that was an unbelievable, unbelievable national park. It was, it was, it was a risk. I'd never been there before. I didn't know how that would work and I know Erica, your family is a national park family. This is a very cool national park that we were able to see over there. Um, so kids got through CMs, chaperones were working to try to get some groups in because most of our groups have six kids plus one chaperone, which is seven people and a lot of these unions only let six total people in. So we had teachers and chaperones chuffing through kids, trying to make it all work and in the end it did. Um, so I'm just really happy over it.
That's awesome. Thank you. Owen had a, my eighth grader had a phenomenal time and he said it was great. There was no, it was very empty out there. So you got to see so much and, but he knows no different, but it's just um, just only positive thing that I think the kids were oblivious, which you know, to all the hard work that you put in. So obviously so much hard work and so seamless for their um, class trip. So I, thank you.
Thank you guys. Thanks for letting us do this every year and continuing to support it.
Thank you.
Thank you for continuing to do it. A good thing for our kids. Yeah. Enjoy it. Alright.
Thanks.
It's really good attendance. Um, next comments by board members and superintendent for the project mallard update.
David.
David. What's that? I've never heard about that. Uh, I went to the meeting Thursday in Roberts. Ryan Companies were there. The, and I don't remember who he's for. There was an attorney there that was either for the end client or for Ryan Companies. And there was a tid or tiff expert that the village also uses that was there to answer questions. Um, if I remember correctly, it was about an hour and a half presentation. Um, really it was just uh, clarification on the project itself. This is the facility that they want to put there. This is the size of it. This is the activity. Um, it's all, it was all basically information that, that has kind of been out there, but this was a public forum to put it out there. Um, they have poster boards and in four corners there in the park building. After the Q and A, you can get up and go to each corner and then focus in on environmental studies, traffic studies, things like that. Just some quick numbers. It's just over a million square feet. There's a mezzanine inside office space that takes it to the one point three, I think it is. So the footprint of the building is just over a million square feet. I believe they said approximately one thousand parking spaces for employees of just under nine hundred something, I believe. Three hundred ninety truck bays. They expect uh, and this is all one off of memory, so uh, anybody feel free to fact check. Two hundred sixty trips per day of trucks, but that counts one trip in and the same truck out is the second trip. So approximately one hundred thirty trucks a day. They don't expect that right away. They do expect it to build to that. I, you know, whether it goes beyond that or not is speculation. I believe they said the tid or the tiff, and I don't recall which it is, lasts for twenty years. Local municipalities could start new projects for fifteen years. After that, they cannot start any new projects. It sounds like approximately twelve or thirteen million of that, they estimate fifty million over those twenty years. Approximately twelve or thirteen million is going to be chewed up. Uh, road work right there in front of highway sixty-five, putting in some more stoplights, four lanes from Wagner Drive, which is the road between AirTech and, and uh, Eller General. Four lanes from there, the freeway. Uh, approximately eight hundred employees total. Three shifts. Forty-five foot tall building, berms between the building and Roberts to the north, up to I believe twenty-four, twenty-six foot tall dirt berms, landscaped trees, bushes, whatnot. The lights that they're using are Elmore names, so they're not trying to prevent the light pollution. Uh, there are special buzzers on the trucks instead of the beepings. You don't hear trucks beeping as they back up it. Just a lot of clarification on the project itself. Probably wouldn't have taken as long, but I think, you know, people are getting pretty emotional about the whole project, so uh, there's a lot of and the comments and they were interrupted a lot of times, but you know, it's understandable that it's unfortunately charged environment, but that can respect go a long way.
You'd mentioned fifty million of which twelve is in the tr- um, traffic or roads. That was infrastructure.
Right.
Correct? Infrastructure improvements.
Yeah, and that's, if I remember correctly, they were estimating twelve to thirteen for infrastructure, um, just to get through all some, some stuff. I don't know exactly how that happens because I'm not going to get there, all of their twelve or thirteen million upfront to do the roads, but I think they have to have the roads to, to the trucks. I don't know how all that gets structured. I, I, I have been no expert on, on any of that, so. Two point five million, I believe is what they're estimating per year for twenty years. So what they do is borrow a hundred fifty million and then it's paid back with the tax interest. So that two million a year is used to pay back the loan rather than pay tax. So that's how they get money. So they can't get everything done. He said a hundred and thirty trucks a day. Like they said approximately two hundred sixty trips, right? They count two trips, three trucks. Yeah.
That's different than what it was before. I thought it was way different number before.
I even thought it was a different number as well. Um, everything, when I went back and you know, did some of my own sleuthing or fact checking out of it. Yeah, the, the number hasn't really changed. Um, I must have misheard it or someone misspoke or whatever. I thought the number was considerably higher as well. I don't know if I, along with many other people, were latching onto that two sixty number, but I think it was two hundred sixty trucks a day and that gets run it up to the three hundred trucks a day are going to be in and out of there. Right, sounds like approximately one hundred thirty is what they're expecting. Expansion in the future, I have no idea. You know, three hundred ninety truck bays. I'm sure that some of that is just setting it up for other trucks so they can dump a trailer here and walk here and pick up or whatever it is, but.
I'm line on next meetings and discussions and decisions. Uh, is there a meeting tonight?
There's a meeting.
Board meeting?
Uh, in Warren Township.
Oh, Warren.
Yeah, um, there is a meeting. When, Wednesday possibly. No, was this a community task force meeting? I, uh, other than the meeting in uh, Warren Township tonight, I don't know when the next, uh, the next meeting is. Seventeenth. Is ringing bell. That's not this year, this year.
Yep. Seventeenth Tuesday, is that?
Yes, sorry. There is a meeting tomorrow. It's a public hearing concerning adoption of an ordinance amending the joint company. It's a plan for the village of Roberts and the town of Warren. That's at the Roberts Village.
It said something about August first was the day they're gonna have, you know, do the break ground or whatever. I mean, obviously, didn't, is that a new date or that just they're guessing what they have as a date? Did they set a new date?
Yeah, I think originally that was the hope.
Right.
But things are dragging out further than they, they thought. I think when they start stacking things up, if memory serves, they're hoping to be done with construction within a year. Start this fall. Still this fall, as long as everything goes their way and then everything gets approved, but um, you know, at this point, I think they're just hoping to maybe break ground before snow flies if everything gets approved. But I know that it's, it's, it ended up running next year.
So as far as the school goes, the biggest impact at this point would be potentially traffic.
Yep, traffic or depending on where the employees come from, if there's people moving in.
Yeah.
The one thing that the tid or tiff fellow, I wish I could remember his name. He clarified that it's going to end up being a net zero to the school district because of school funding. Now, it actually might go up, but we get more tax money, but then our state funding goes down. He said it doesn't really matter what happens as far as this is concerned for funding. It's going to be a net zero for the district. Unless we can talk this company into a one-time cancellation or something, you know? Right. I, I don't recall his name, um, but he works with the village up there to, to project. Ellers, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, in the next year, if it goes through, the biggest impact would be construction, traffic and road construction, right? It would be impacted with bus routes.
Yep.
At this point.
There was a traffic survey and they said that there really wasn't at a time.
Yeah, the traffic.
Once it's in place.
Yeah, once everything is done, the stoplights are in, the four lanes are in, when everything is said and done, I think they said it was going to be approximately six seconds longer to get from the edge of Roberts to ninety-four. At which point I think there was uproarious laughter.
Cause two extra traffic lights, I think they were talking about.
Yep, adding two more stoplights, um, but they said that the four lanes, turning lanes for the trucks will help. So the trucks aren't tying up all the traffic lanes and potential turning lanes, but under the factor of eighteen eighty county material and all of it. They would. Yeah, that I couldn't tell you. Um, they did not mention anything and something that I did read uh, online that was a, just kind of an aha's. I didn't even think about that. Uh, they talked about the truck traffic, which everybody's really concerned about the truck traffic. They didn't particularly discuss. I'm sure that they factored it in because this is what they do for a living, the traffic people. They didn't mention anything about, you know, our employees that they also added to the traffic, which is sixteen hundred result, which is sixty hundred trips. Yeah, now you're looking at three shifts and how many are on first, how many are at second, how many are third, you know, I, I don't know what that adds. Are you really looking at maybe three hundred, three hundred, two hundred on third shift? You know, extra cars around what time?
Time of day.
Starting now. If they start, you know, let's say they start their first shift at five AM. A lot of that car traffic is going to be out of the way of most of our commuters heading into the cities or heading to the freeway. Well.
Just continue to keep it on the agenda and updates as goals.
Yep.
Uh, next scheduled presentations by guests and staff members. Uh, therapy dog presentation. I thought maybe I'd have an assistant for this.
Well, I didn't want to bring her in until she was approved. I'll bring her back to another meeting if this goes. I have some pictures and.
Yep. Yeah, then you're gonna have to hit like uh, F eight, I believe it is, where you.
Yeah. Extend your screen. I could do that on my, I don't know if I can do that on the Chromebook.
Alright, um, hello. For those of you who don't know who I am, my name is Rachel Hansen and I am a high school disability specialist teacher here at Central. Today I'm proposing a trial period with my dog Rose. Um, for two days a week as a service animal in my classroom, starting mid-September after teaching expectations by students. Rose is currently a certified as an emotional support and comfort dog and will be starting as a service dog in the classroom and then transitioning, hopefully if everything goes well, into a therapy dog after she passes her training. Um, she'll be starting her training tomorrow at a program in River Falls. I've put together a few slides to support my research and collective information from other districts in our area. Therapy dogs in school grew in popularity after the casualties from school shootings such as Parkland, Florida. Pictured here is the yearbook pictures of the dogs present in the school a year after the shootings occurred. These are actually all dogs that go around with certain students who have gotten their dogs trained for therapy. Um, many other schools utilize, utilize therapy dogs, but one that started a program that I found to be quite useful is called Charlotte's litter. This program was created because of the Sandy Hook shooting. The family of a little girl named Charlotte pictured here was a victim of the school shooting, starting this program to educate schools and families about service dogs and the benefits they bring to the classroom. Their website is full of resources, some of which I want to use in my classroom prior to bringing Rose in and educate my students, but it's also full of, full of resources for all individuals who could be involved with a service dog in the school. According to their website, there are sixteen goals of therapy dogs at schools. Increase empathy and compassion. Dogs can assist working with students who have anger management issues, bullying behavior and any other antisocial conduct. They can also decrease retaliatory violence and improve self-esteem. Dogs can assist with students who are victims of bully and related behaviors. So not only can they help students who have been bullied, but also help students who tend to be the bully. They can help the students stay connected with social networks. Dogs can assist with students who are socially disconnected from the mainstream student body and help with attendance issues, providing them with a conversation starter or a common interest. It's a great starting point. They can reduce anxiety levels and help children to decompress after traumatic circumstances. Dogs can help in the reduction of stress and anxiety among children in social settings that are stressful. This can be self-inflicted stressors that may come with a disability, a family-related stressor or major life expenses as well. Dogs can also improve reading skills, comprehension and increase confidence and literary interests. Dogs can contribute to the improvement of reading and comprehension skills of students who have difficulties. Reading out loud helps increase a person's fluency, comprehension and confidence. When they're reading to a dog, there's less stress to get every word right or fear of negative feedback. They can also lessen the emotional trauma of a critical incident or event for students, teachers and staff. Integrating trained therapy dogs into the emergency preparedness and response plans of a school system when a critical incident occurs can have major benefits. Of course, there are always things to keep in mind that may be objections or concerns when bringing an animal into a classroom. The main ones covered in my research are as follows. If a student has an allergy to dogs, I will be notified as we will be sure to respect the classroom environment and school environments that those students are involved with. This is stated in a district-wide letter that I will share with you at the end. Some students may have a fear of dogs. Similar to the allergy protocol, as I just stated, Rose will be closely monitored at all times by me. If it's brought to my attention, we will be sure that we respect all students' feelings about dogs. When it comes to annual maintenance, Rose will be bathed at my home twice a month. That's recommended for her break. Brushed more often to cut down on shedding and her nails clipped regularly to reduce scratching or damage from nails. We also have a vacuum in our classroom that works well with pet hair and we can vacuum the carpeted side of our room daily. Rose takes a green grass pill daily that helps keep our grass green. She will continue this pill to keep the grass healthy at school and I will have dog bags on me at all times to pick up her other remains immediately. In general, I will be the sole caretaker of Rose and all interactions with her will be done under my supervision. Throughout my time researching how to get my dog Rose into the district, I decided to reach out to some other area districts who have had success with this addition to their staff. I have four testimonials, but tonight I'm going to touch on two. Brian Buck is the assistant principal at River Falls Middle School. They have a therapy dog in their school psychol- with their school psychologist and his office staff is working on adding another this year. He stated that he was very hesitant at first. There are a lot of things to keep in mind when adding a dog to your district, such as allergies, hesitation, hesitant students and distractions. But there have only been positives that have come from it. He has seen a significant change in students who have worked with their dog. Some have come out of their shell, shared information that what they would not have shared without having a comfort with them and a mood booster is always worth it. As long as the expectations are clear and in place, he recommends this addition wholeheartedly. Most people I talked to said they had seen a gain in confidence, positive changes towards learning and improved motivation, enhanced relationships with peers and teachers due to experiencing trust and unconditional love from the dogs. This in turn helps students learn how to express their feelings and enter into a more trusting relationship. The other testimony that I want to touch on is the cute dog picture with the silhouette behind him. This is Katie, well, sorry, the dog's name is Franny. Katie works, worked in Ellsworth at the elementary school. Her story is most similar to mine, so I figured I, it would be helpful to share. She started with Franny when she was a year and a half in her classroom and saw amazing benefits daily. She was an emotional support dog and was signed up to start therapy dog training a year later. Franny was formally introduced to all students in their classrooms throughout the building. Katie created a what does Franny do at Ellsworth Elementary School video and that was presented to the students in Ellsworth community via Facebook. This shows her at work in the district to inform the community of her job at school. During the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, Franny read with a second grade classroom for forty-five minutes per day to increase fluency and reading. Students improved their correct words per minute by an average of eighteen point five more words above the tip typical average in that grade level. The Ellsworth High School Special Education Program has a dog walking program and takes Franny walking weekly. Franny joins classrooms upon staff requests for academic, emotional and rewarding inclusion. Franny assists with emotional and behavioral situations as needed for all students. So after hearing these local firsthand experiences, the real question is how can she benefit our district? Rose can support emotional and behavioral needs in my classroom. I have a few students who have some difficulty processing their emotions and feelings. A snuggle or a, a walk with a sweet dog is a great fix. We can teach students responsibility and care skills. At least half of the students in my classroom have a dog at home. By adding some care skills throughout parent permission and open communication, we can grow our life skills course, add skills to my students' helpful list at home and give them a better understanding of all the work that goes into an animal, owning an animal of their own. Lastly, Rose can be a cheerful face and companion to whoever needs a friend. We all have our days and moments where we just need a mood booster or a break from a stressful situation and I feel Rose that can bring that comfort to anyone she meets. I printed many resources that include letters to be sent home, district-wide and those who will be working with her closely. Basic rules when working with Rose that will be taught prior to interacting with her and a therapy dog policy that I've completed based on the Wisconsin therapy policies in Wisconsin schools. I truly feel like she would be a huge asset in my room for anyone and all others who interact and work with her. If you have any questions, I guess.
Maybe Rachel, start with the difference between emotional support dog, therapy dog, service dog, the trainings, the trainings Rose um, has or would have, et cetera.
Yeah, um, so Rose actually came from um, the Good Going Kennels, which they um, are just north of Hammond. They have students in our district, um, but so she actually had seven months of training prior to getting her. She had some behavioral training and then also some hunting training, but she's much too scared to be a hunter. She's much better at just being a people person, people dog. Um, she will be starting her therapy dog training tomorrow. Um, she's certified in comfort and emotional, so she's actually my comfort and emotional dog. So her certification can actually, if I have the certification with me, I can take her into any restaurant into, that allows service animals, um, traveling. She can go on an airplane now. Um, and pretty much anywhere that accepts service dogs. Um, the difference, the main difference is that the therapy training is very rigorous and it is a bunch more specific so that she understands um, when she's at, doing work and when she's off work. So with the emotional support, she's just more just her normal giddy puppy self, but she's a very good listener. But with therapy, she'll understand when it's appropriate to approach a person, when it's a, just a lot more rigorous training involved with the therapy side.
How long is the training?
Um, I find out tomorrow. It's kind of based on the initial evaluation of how she is and then. evaluation of how she is, and then from there then on, they kind of base it off of. The program that I'm working with in River Falls is a one-to-one program, and so then they give you different things to work on at home. And you can do it virtually or do it online. So it's totally based on.
So like two weeks, three months? I mean, do you have any?
I think most of them are six weeks to two to three months.
How old is Rose?
Rose turns two in October. Yeah, so she's definitely still young, but she has, she's got lots of puppy energy, but knows when to listen.
So Rachel first approached me with the idea, I think, summer, and then asked her to present to the admin team. I think the first admin meeting in August to cover a lot of these, right, questions and vet some of these things and talk about, all right, logistics, you know, see the benefits, what it could be, some of the potential drawbacks, what do we need to consider? So communicating, obviously with the families in your classroom, that's who she'd interact with the most, but she, you know, won't just be allowed to roam the school, although some programs do. The dog is super comfortable, like the schools are home, but again, it's based on the students and like you said, some of the considerations with potential allergies, potential fear of dogs, but obviously the benefits far outweigh any potential drawbacks as long as, you know, go through the process and she, she tests those and communicates, you know, with the families, the high school. We certainly, we honestly recommended it. We wanted to bring it to the board. You know, and I guess ask you if this is something you're okay with, you know, the admin doing, or if this you felt was a board decision that you wanted to formally approve. If so, I had forgot to put it on the agenda till today. So it would have to not be, if you decide you want to prove it, it would be able to do that until next month, thirteenth of September.
We talked about policies, you think there would need to be a district-wide policy regarding this? Or or come to just say?
Yeah. I'll be.
Kurt, you can do it in your building and you take care of it.
If I can just throw something out there, my education at St. Clair Central. Parrots, rats, and snakes.
Really?
Did they all come before the board to say, is it okay if we do this, you know? I just personally, I, not to take away from the policy side of it, but I just, I don't I don't know that this is a board kind of thing. To me, this is part of education and it's part of prophecy planning, honestly, part of a classroom. We're just, we're not here to run the classrooms. That's my opinion.
I would be biased.
I agree completely.
I have some, like the parent notes and stuff that, I have a very vague one for district-wide that could be sent out to all students even from the beginning of the school year so that in general, everyone's at least informed if some students are, if families have students at the high school and elementary school and student comes home and is like, oh, I got to pet a dog at school today. Just so everyone knows, like, if this goes well, maybe by the end of the school year, we can open it up where my students are showing other classes throughout the district that how cool this program is and what Rose can do, but yeah. If you want anything that I've suggested to you, but I'm raised.
Right, I think I could scale, get help a lot of students.
Just additionally, maybe, and not just the students, but to find out allergies in the home as well.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because some can be severely allergic, get it? Somebody's petting it at school and comes home and gives somebody a hug. I mean, they want to get that spot of house food as well, but I imagine. I personally, I think this is a bad.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda is the summer projects update.
Greg Greed's joining us virtually.
And virtually, maybe.
Yep, I got it.
Let's give me a. You're on a roll, you're like.
Hello there. Can everyone hear me all right?
No.
Hold on.
No, for some reason, it's just coming through my computer. Try now, Greg.
Can everyone hear me?
Yep, I can grab some speakers too.
No.
Yeah, yep.
Do I have to do something on my end or is it something on your end there?
It was on my end and I fixed it. You're good to go, Greg. Report away.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks, and I hope everyone had a good day. I just have a little bit of a rundown of what we've done at each school this summer. And we didn't have any major building construction, which is kind of good this time. Like we have had in the past. At the high school, everything is done, ready to go, except for the auditorium. We just got that back. We, we had some work done in that area. A couple of the walls were shifting a little bit, so we had some work done on that and they've corrected that and we're ready to clean that now. Everything is back in place and the work went pretty smooth there, so there wasn't too much dust and debris in there. So we're cleaning that this week and we'll be ready for the all-staff meeting on Monday. At the middle school, we're down to our last hallway to be stripped and re-waxed. And that's down by the art room. And we're doing our touch-up painting at this time also, so they're just about done and ready to go. At the elementary, we've got the summer daycare program going on. We feed those students hot lunch twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. And right now is their last week of daycare. And so after Thursday, we're going to take the cafeteria apart and start stripping that, waxing it, and it will be ready by Monday. We had some new concrete done at the elementary in the back of the school. It used to be all mulch back there and it just got kind of discolored and it just didn't seem to work out as well as we thought it would. And so now we've taken the mulch out and put concrete in there. And now we've got a little mini skate park back there, so it should be interesting to see how that goes. But we'll be able to keep that cleaner with snow removal and stuff like that, so that will be good. And out front, we took the block seating arrangement there around the flagpole out, and we're going to concrete that, so it'll be just concrete there at the flagpole. At the bus garage, we did some concrete work there also. The aprons that go into the building where Brian's office is there, all three of those were broken up very badly through the years. And it was time to get them fixed. Got to be quite a trip hazard and everything, so those were torn out. All the aprons are torn out and put new ones back in there. Much, much easier for snow removal. And I think Brian is happy for that. The district office, we put new concrete in there too on the north and on the east side of the building. With the road construction, the street construction, they cut back the size of the concrete from the building to the street. And so we decided it was time to put new concrete in for ourselves. And we took out the trees on the north side, which makes it easier for cleanup for us, snow removal and everything else, so. That's about it. We're, we're ready to go. We're, we're close and we'll be ready.
Any questions?
Any questions? Any questions?
No questions. And you did a thorough job.
Pretty good at this, Greg.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
This should be pretty good. You got forty-one years of experience doing it, right? Forty-one summers.
This is his favorite thing.
Oh.
Forty, forty-four.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Who's counting at this point?
Just glad you can still count.
I gotta take my shoes and socks off someday, but I can still count.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda, the financial reports.
All right, bank account balances as of July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Citizen State Bank checking, two million, five hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-seven cents. The Citizen State Bank money market is five thousand and eight cents. The Money Market Fund forty-sixth is fifty-three dollars and seven cents. Citizen State Bank New Market Suicide Prevention, sixteen thousand, five hundred and two dollars and fifty-three cents, zero dollars in local government investment pool, with the total bank account balances of two million, five hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
Who agrees up?
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Next on the agenda is the consideration of the consent agenda. Just clarifications on to print Carol Bodish and her resignation with retirement, so four hours of grounds custodian as an addition. And you'll see down on the bottom, she's the approval appointment, so that's just clearing up the grounds and then going to the elementary, housekeeping for eight hours. And then the other one's Ian Horton. We did this last time, but we only had middle school girls. This is getting middle school girls and boys on this to see teen girls. So just clarification, if you caught that in there compared to what we did the last time.
I was gonna ask about Carol Bodish. Are we short of four hours grounds custodian then?
We are, yeah, as of, as of whatever the start date is, yeah, we will be, yep.
Move to approve the consent agenda items. Second.
All those in favor?
All right.
Opposed? All right. Next up, administrative reports. Gallup, Q twelve, employee engagement presentation.
All right, I'll have to report from here. I don't have two computers, so if that's okay with you, I'll stay here and I'll share the screen with those online. All right, this is what we, John, Hugh, and I had presented quite a few years ago now. That's what we had titled it, Employee Engagement, One Thing That Can Improve Everything, and our biased opinion, but I, I hope you believe that as well after going through the presentation. So I figured we'd start with what is employee engagement, but first of all, let's talk about what it is not. Employee engagement is not to be confused with, you know, happiness, right? Somebody's happy at work. Doesn't necessarily mean they're productive. Said the example is you might whistle while you work or volunteer to make a lunch run and be happy, but that doesn't necessarily mean you're productive. Also, doesn't mean that your employee satisfaction is another thing you hear about. It's not to be confused with that. Someone might be satisfied doing nothing and watching the clock all day, an example. Somebody you may be familiar with.
It's like a Peter Gibbons. Oh, there you are. We're just talking about you. You must be Peter Gibbons. Look, Sid, that was my associate. Go ahead and grab a seat and join us for a minute. See, what we're actually trying to do here is we're just, we're trying to get a feel for how they spend their day. So if you would, would you walk us through a typical day for you? Yeah? Well, I generally come in at least fifteen minutes late. I use the side door. That way Lumber can't see me. And after that, I just sort of space out for about an hour. Space out? Yeah, I just stare at my desk, but it looks like I'm working. I do that for probably another over afternoon lunch, too. I'd say in a given week, I probably only do about fifteen minutes of real actual work. Would you be a good sport and indulge us and just tell us? Oh, yeah. Shouldn't equity ship. Would that do anything for you? I don't know, I guess. Listen, I'm gonna go. It's been really nice talking to both of you guys. Absolutely. The pleasure's all on this side of the table, trust me. Good luck with your layoffs, all right? I hope your firings go really.
So if you're not familiar with that movie, he had been hypnotized because he was stressed out at work and the, and the hypnotist had a heart attack right after he said, you have no worries in the world at work, right? So then they're doing the sufficiency thing. They bring in two hatchet men, so to speak, and, and so, yeah, he just tells them honestly what he does, but there's an.
Say I'm exactly missing it.
Huh?
Right, he says that in the movie. I wouldn't say.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of work.
Missing it.
Missing it.
So there's a boy that's maybe satisfied, maybe he's happy, but it's not an engaged employee by anyone's definition. So what is the definition? There's a couple of different definitions that are out there. Gallup, which I'll get to in a little bit, is kind of the leading authority on the survey and measuring it, but employee engagement is not proprietary to Gallup. So it's defined as a heightened emotion, emotional connection that an employee feels for his or her organization that influences him or her to exert greater discretionary effort to his or her work. Again, discretionary, again, that's that, kind of that extra, giving that extra. And I tried to bold some of the most important words in the definition. Or one who is enthusiastic about their work and takes positive action to further their school's reputation and success. Employees feeling connected and valued as well as reporting a strong sense of balance in their lives. When teachers are engaged, kids learn, and that's our why. That's why when I first found out about this, my second year here, I was so enthusiastic. It makes sense. Engaged teachers equals engaged, engaged educators equals engaged students. It's more than just that, though, like just across the board, right, in any industry, employee engagement improves absenteeism, the turnover, theft, if that's a thing. I don't think we have to worry about that here. Safety, not so much, more so in production lines, et cetera. Production for us, which equals student achievement and the bottom line financially and much more. That's just the things at work. There are a spillover and crossover effect where your emotions at work spill over in your personal life and cross over to those around you, right? We talk about somebody being either a positive effect to their colleagues or a negative effect. Other benefits of employee engagement, better health, be a better parent, right? Again, if you're dissatisfied at work and grumpy and not happy, right, you bring that home with you. So there's that spillover effect. Same thing with your spouse or your significant other. The other thing, employee engagement improves culture, right? That's, that's one of the biggest byproducts of employee engagement. Culture eats strategy for breakfast, Peter Drucker is famous for saying. And you can have the best strategy in the world, right? We can have the best policies, the best vision and mission statement and all the, you know, the plans in the world, but nobody cares. If nobody cares, right, employing engaged employees, it isn't going to matter. But if you have the wrong strategy, a good culture and employed, engaged workforce is certainly going to trump that and overcome. So Gallup Q twelve again is the survey instrument that we use. They're by far the world leaders in measuring employee engagement. Yeah, I'm sure you're very familiar with Gallup. The surveys is what they do. Across, when I first saw this in two thousand and thirteen, I was shocked. And this is in the United States. Thirty percent of employees are engaged, fifty-two percent are disengaged, and eighteen are actively disengaged. When you're actively disengaged, they say, you know, they're actually working against you, actively working against the company to undermine it. They're the ones in, that are putting holes in the boat. So everybody's trying to roll forward. And I like to say fifty, the disengaged are the folks that are kind of in neutral, right? And I like to say fifty, the disengage are the folks that are kind of in neutral, right? Um, and then we want our, our employees to be engaged. So then, uh, the, the latest research in two thousand twenty, you can see it's, it changes just slightly from thirty to thirty-one, fifty-two to fifty-five and fourteen. So it goes down a little bit, at least, uh, the folks, again, of all Gallup surveys in the United States are, uh, actively disengaged. What are the twelve questions? It's called Q twelve for a reason. There's twelve questions. Actually do a, a Q zero, which is just kind of a general overall feeling that you'll see later in the, uh, presentation. So it's like you're the familiar side, familiarize yourself with this. Uh, I won't read everyone. Just give you a few minutes or a few moments to read those. And I'll explain a little better as to why those questions and which ones are more impactful than others. Question ten, I don't know, has always stood out to me. It's like, well, we can't really control that. But again, uh, their research shows that that's an important question. I'll show you at which level it's important. So there's a hierarchy of needs, much like Maslow's, uh, in terms of the twelve questions, uh, they go from, from question one is to the basic all the way up to question twelve growth. And, uh, again, question ten, I asked my best friend. Again, that speaks to teamwork. But you can see kind of the pyramid and, and where we want to be and why there's a question. Uh, the, the higher numbered questions are more important than the lower numbered questions. So I'm gonna give you an example. Here's our two thousand eighteen report and I, and for time's sake, you know, for this presentation, I'll just, this, this will be shared with you. You can look through and click on all these and dig into the data, uh, feel free. But two thousand eighteen is the best example, uh, not just because it was our highest overall score, but, uh, in two thousand nineteen, it went down slightly uh, because of the goal program, the referendum communication that, um, the three of you were a part of. That took a little bit of hit on our engagement, um, that year, uh, and I'll show you all those later here. But, um, this is where we reached our peak and we're right back to this level again in two thousand twenty, but the two thousand twenty reports, they redid their whole dashboard. They're different. They're clunkier, less user friendly, harder to share, so I'm gonna use the two thousand eighteen. So you can see in upper left-hand corner, there's a, uh, engagement index. So they give their percentages. Remember when I said the, the national averages again? Or like thirty, fifty-some and fourteen or eighteen? This is ours. So, uh, uh, in this year, two thousand eighteen, sixty-nine, maybe it's hard for you to see, sixty-nine percent. Blowing up a little. Sixty-nine percent are engaged, twenty-eight percent disengaged, three percent actively disengaged. And then you get your employee engagement, uh, index ratio by dividing the engaged by the actively disengaged. So sixty-nine divided by three, obviously is twenty-three to one. Year before was fifty-nine to two, so we had an engagement index ratio of twenty-nine and a half. So that gives you a pretty good idea where you're at and I'll, and I'll speak Jeff, uh, at one point when we were doing this presentation, uh, years back. Uh, put a number to that and I'll put a number, like, that's a percentage. That's, that's great, but then we put, that's means this many actual people are disengaged or are actively disengaged. And that was a little more alarming when we're like, hey, we're world class in our, in our, uh, our engagement index ratio, but, right? There's always the but, we can get better. So, uh, not the first year, but, um, years like sixteen through twenty, they have a past and a current, which is nice to create, uh, compare it from the previous year. So, and they give a color code. It's nice visual color codes. Green obviously is good and there's yellow and, uh, for kind of mid average. And then there's red for like you're, you're, you're below the national average. So overall, this is overall, you can see the sheet here. It gave you, uh, where we, where we are with a zero to five, kind of a five-point scale um, per question and then the, uh, percentile rank. So again, this was outstanding year, um, and then we can break it down by job types. So there's administration by teacher, paraprofessional, bus driver, secretary, district office. Another thing to point out too is this, uh, number in the parentheses, two hundred surveys. Uh, actually there were two hundred and five, I believe, this year. So that kind of gives you, uh, an idea of how many respondents there are per category. There's eight secretaries, for instance, that, uh, responded. This is open to all. Ideally, we'd have two hundred and, uh, seventy employees that would take this if we had everybody, including the board, uh, take it. Um, back to job type, custodial maintenance, food service, there weren't enough. If there's fi- uh, less than five, they don't give you a score to protect anonymity. This is an anonymous survey. Um, again, you do have to say which building I work in, what my job is and who my supervisor is. So it kind of can narrow it down a little bit that way so we can use the data. And, uh, the most important part is to come up with an action plan, but it also protects your anonymity so they can be completely honest if it's, you know, critical. Which we certainly wanted to be completely honest. And then there's kind of, uh, uh, category for other support staff. Then they can break it down by location, which building you work in, elementary, middle, high, and there's the district-wide employees and bus garage. And then lastly, manager, right? So how many, uh, uh, is again, in this number, there were nineteen that responded that's, uh, identify me as their manager or supervisor. And this is their direct manager. So Brian Peterson, Pat Bashy at the time, Shelley Clay, Pete Newsbaum, Kurt Soderberg, Greg Green, and Tammy Simonson again didn't have enough for food service. So that's what a report has. I mean, there's a ton of information there. Um, you know, it breaks it down in a lot of different ways. Any questions on that?
The sense of what percentage of our employees actually complete the survey?
Yeah, so, um, what I, what she recommended the first year, um, the consultant says, purchase eighty percent because you gotta purchase these, uh, is each one is fifteen dollars. Um, so I started that, so I think I started at a hundred and eighty-five or something the first year. And then like last year, start at two hundred and then as folks, we get near the end of the, the window closing and we're sent reminders, uh, and then, um, we can purchase then in chunks of five or ten that way. But, um, so, yeah, it's, it's, uh, this year, two hundred and five out of the two hundred and forty-three, I think, that year. So, yeah, we can definitely do it. What's that?
And do they have any nationwide data that tries to presume the people that don't take it? Are they, would they be in the disengaged? Would they?
Actually, our consultant says the disengaged are more likely to take it and actively disengaged. Um, and then again, uh, these are slides with, uh, and I had Dan Root help me do this originally, so I just had three years that fit on here. Um, but, uh, and I already explained these, uh, what, what, what those are. And again, uh, a key, a key thing to improve in your ratio, obviously, is to get the divisor to get lower, right? And I'll explain that in a little bit. So there are all the reports, again, you look through at your convenience and, uh, see them like you, like I was explaining, two thousand twenty looks quite a bit different. Breaks down like this. Lot of the same information is in there. It just doesn't condense it all nicely in one report. You have to, um, export, click on a bunch of different things and export them, but this is the overall one, just to give you an idea of what it looks like now and, and moving forward. So here, I just put in a simple spreadsheet, um, the annual, uh, results. So started in two thousand fourteen, this past year, we always take it December. Um, and again, intentional with that, uh, the new employees gives them time, gives them, uh, about four months with their supervisor to understand our culture and make an informed, you know, uh, fill out the survey, uh, after being informed and a little acclimated to everything. Um, so we try to, we, we do, we're exactly the same window, uh, basically between Thanksgiving and Christmas every year. And we have the results back usually before, uh, Christmas and, and then we analyze them and do the action plans starting in January. So again, you can see the grand mean. I broke it down by the engaged, not engaged, disengaged, which gives you your ratio. And then I explained how many surveys. So it's increased as our employees, uh, our staff has increased. Um, then last year was a little bit of a hiccup with their new system. I started with two hundred and they, uh, said, oh, we can't add anymore. So that's why it maxed out at two hundred. Um, nationwide, again, a comparison, it's thirty-one, fifty-five, fourteen to compare you to our last year's data of sixty-eight, twenty-eight, four. Um, and again, our scores are world-class. Our consultant works with tons of people. This is what he does. He says, you know, when you're in the ninety-fourth percentile, you're world-class. The good news, bad news is, you know, you don't have much room to grow. Uh, he goes, it's hard to stay there. And then the next year, we took that little dip, like I said, from four point three to four point one eight, but we're back at four point three two in the middle of a pandemic. So I think that was a really good indicator. Uh, to what I mentioned before, Jeff said, well, what does that mean? Twenty-eight percent, uh, you know, Gallup says that's great, but that actually means fifty-six people are, uh, disengaged. Right? There's work to do. Fifty-six people and eight are actively working against us. Obviously, four percent of two hundred. Um, so then, you know, we, we aren't gonna rest on our laurels. There's work to do. So you, you might ask, well, how do we do that? Um, originally, uh, the correlation, we started using our, uh, our, um, report card, just, uh, school report cards, measuring them and, and, and comparing them to our engagement index. And there was a correlation. You know, and again, Bob Adkinson, you can see in the bottom, your Adkinson associate says there's always a correlation. What, like, you know, some factor, some organizations use the number of widgets they produce. Some use, financial institutions use their bottom line. Some use, you know, turnover rate or whatever, you know, what, what's, what do schools use? So, well, right now we have a report card that is, would be our best, uh, use. Now, we haven't had one in two years because of, uh, the COVID pandemic, but this is the very first year. I'm like, wow, yeah, there it is. He put it in the visual graph, the higher the, uh, report card score matched the, the higher the, uh, employee engagement. So that was, uh, something aha for me, my first year in, in that. So action plans, that's, so what do we do with the information, right? We take it and we break it down. It's almost always been question four and, uh, question seven. You look back, um, no, I'm sorry, question seven, at work, my senior opinions seem to count, or question two, uh, I have the materials and equipment I need to, to do my work. So those are something we tackled early on and we did that through feedback sessions. So, uh, we share the, we share the, uh, scores and results with different groups, um, typically by elementary, middle and high, and then we can break it down from there. Greg Green meets with the custodians, Brian, Pete meet with the bus drivers, I meet with the district office. Um, you can break it down even more, but you get their honest opinion. And what does that mean to you? What is, what is, you know, how can we improve, you know, the, uh, question seven, my opinion seemed to count? Or what materials and equipment do you not have? What can we help with? So, um, we turn them into action plans. Um, and I can share them in a little bit here too. We, we talked about staff attendance, uh, honest conversations, wages and benefits. Staff attendance, you know, I, I had, uh, you know, the philosophy that in order to do a good job, you know, you, you need to be here, right? Uh, crazy, um, but why, you know, what, why aren't you here? There are discretionary days if, if, when we're in, in our meetings, you know, they're completely honest. There are discretionary days like, uh, you know, uh, mental health and all that plays into it. Like, so, uh, we started measuring that and, uh, share that in a future slide. It improved greatly. So we started tracking it. We used ASAP, the number of subs that you needed in any given month back in two thousand thirteen. And you can see we did it by month. Um, and our goal, which was, we just kind of said, we want to prove it by twenty percent. We just kind of picked it, right? Or like, sounds like a good one. We didn't have any necessary scientific data to say why we want to prove it by twenty percent. And, and our last year here, we got to twenty-two and a half percent. So, um, uh, where is it? Yeah, three-year, four-year, and then this last year. So it did improve, but it got to a point where, you know, again, through their feedback, they like, we feel a lot of pressure. We feel a lot of pressure. We feel a lot of pressure. We can't miss work for any reason. And it's like, that was kind of an unintended consequence. Like, life happens. You have, you know, families and personal things that have happened. We didn't want it, you know, to do that. And then COVID hit anyway. So we discontinued our incentives. We discontinued obviously tracking it, uh, and we get, we've done away with perfect attendance, monthly drawings and those incentives, which came from the staff. You know, we did the, we tracked attendance. If you had perfect attendance, you got entered into a spreadsheet by building. And then, uh, we drew one person, uh, every month. I did a video, did a message to the staff for, um, uh, fifty-dollar gift card, which we get as rewards. They don't cost us anything through our, uh, district credit card. So it was, it was a win-win-win. It was going great, but again, it, it worked. Our, our goal was accomplished and, but we've discontinued the perfect attendance and tracking it, uh, just because of now the pandemic has changed things. Again, the action plans, old ones are there. Obviously, we don't, uh, have the new ones yet for this year. Honest conversations were one things that really, uh, were a game changer for, for our culture. Um, and these are the first four questions we asked, uh, in the early stages, early years.
Just face to face.
One-to-one-on-one, yeah. Yep. With every employee. These are other ones we evolved to. So what are they? They're honest, reflective, helpful opportunities for growth. I, obviously, it's hard, you know, uh, some, to come somebody to be completely honest and trusting, but we've created that over time. Trust takes time. They weren't evaluative or used against you. Uh, but of course, the disclaimer was if you said something in that meeting that was a mandatory reporter, obviously, we had to report that. We always gotta say that. And then lastly, I just, uh, you know, uh, Pam Cantor said this to me, I think about two thousand seventeen. She just said, quote, "We are not a small school anymore." And we were talking about adding staff, adding district office support staff and it, and it plays into it as, so, you know, again, I think it aligns with why employee engagement is, is important. We have two hundred and seventy employees at the end of last year. This year's to be determined yet, still, uh, hiring. Uh, but yeah, eighty employees in eight years. It's pretty significant uh, growth in just eight years. So I wanted to end with that. Any questions on employee engagement in Q twelve?
Do you think we should try to figure out if we don't have a school report card, what that metric is, you know? When I was on the board at Westfield, we introduced this. Our test was patient satisfaction. And it just went up lockstep as employee engagement, patient satisfaction, which is their consumer.
Yeah.
Satisfaction went up and they use MPS. Net promoter from patients and they actually ended up with a bonus. Depending on what their annual net promoter score was, they got per head bonus from that. So I think we should really figure out, you know, it seems to me it should be some student achievement measure. You know, we don't have very good student engagement thing, but I would think that better teacher engagement would be better student engagement.
Hmm.
Yeah, but I, you know, we have to figure out what the measure is with the school report card. With all of its flaws, at least you had every year, you could compare it to basically what we measured last time. So.
And this is high-level stuff. I mean, uh, obviously, the magic happens with the details and, and, and each individualizing the, the plans each year and just listening. I, I think creating trust is huge. There's honest conversations, um, you know, the three of you were here, you know, when it was, there was, oh, some feedback that they're only filling it out that they're, I'm gonna give high scores just so it goes away, right? And again, maybe, maybe it's true, maybe it's not, uh, but I think eight years, I think folks that had that said, well, it's not going away. We're gonna do it every year. The board has continued to invest in it. So, yeah, this is certainly something worthwhile.
And there was feedback that it didn't apply to teachers?
Yeah.
You know, and this is ubiquitous, almost all. It's industry agnostic. And if you look at the twelve questions, I think, tell me what twelve questions wouldn't apply to your position.
And it, and another, you know, uh, misunderstanding sometimes, you know, my supervisor or someone at work seems to care, right? A lot of words and they, and some people say, well, that's my boss, my boss, my boss. I know someone at work, right? So we talk about, we're in this together, leadership, you know, Nick just did a presentation this morning and leadership is all of us, right? Anytime two people, two or more people are present, leadership exists, influence exists. You have influence, you have influence, right? So it's not just, oh, this is on, I'm my boss, it's all about my boss, or it's all on us as supervisors. It's not. At work, my opinions seem to count. Doesn't say my boss listens to my opinions, but again, through the research, these are the best wording of these questions to get the results they want. get the results they want for engagement.
It would be interesting to, you know, without name, to look at the eight people that are actively disengaged and how they answer these questions. I mean, which ones are they?
The bottom. So question one and ones or four, probably. The base of the pyramid, but generally.
Qu- question four was one. I misspoke. Question four was one that's, um, you know, about recognition or praise, right? So the shout-outs is one thing that every school started. They just started doing the weekly shout-outs in their staff newsletters. And again, it wasn't up to Pete to just recognize and praise all the staff. It was recognizing and praise. So shout-outs were a simple thing that they could just add to the spreadsheet, gets put out there, gets published. And then, that's one of the favorite things I love reading about the staff newsletters, the shout-outs, all the great things that are going on. But again, that's on everyone.
That's the one that, um, you know, at, at work, we're doing the, like, top places to work, right? Just gets courts. There's like a more in-depth than this one that we're doing, but that's the one that we were getting dinged on. I hate this comparison to like the, the next generation. Scored, they're harsh. Like, if they literally, they take it very literal. If they didn't get something in the last seven days, they ding you and they take. And, and we did it, we did it by, and by age. There, like, there was a clear cut between generations on how they scored that question. Um, so there was a very purposeful approach to some of those things about having those conversations and giving that feedback more regularly and like.
We did talk about that too. Educators are very literal too with that. So this is in the last seven days. And I think, well, oh, I remember hearing that thing, but that was last Tuesday.
Four of those.
And the weekly, staff weekly newsletter is literally every Sunday goes out. So it is seven-day intervals, but, yeah.
Well, and I appreciate that you take this data by building, by supervisor, by location. And okay, what can we do to, I mean, it doesn't go up as it has without being purposeful about taking the information and trying to.
Yeah.
Be more.
When you just scanned it, but I could, there's one group that's not as engaged.
Yeah.
I mean, I was like the, the bus drivers.
In hospitals, it's always the nurses.
We don't, we don't know who is the active, right? We have pretty good guesses, but we don't know, right? I mean, if.
If it's teachers, if it's bus drivers, we can't figure that out from the data.
No, no.
No, you can figure out a group.
Well, not for the active one is, you know, the eight percent that are, or the four percent that are actively disengaged.
You know, I'm like, oh, is that really, you know, for the bus drivers? Cause well, they kind of come and go. So, yeah, they probably don't have a best friend. So.
And they do talk about that. Like, we're, we're, we drive on our own all day, you know?
Yeah, so I was just curious if it was, you know, the pinpoint where the eight here, you know?
Now, for coaching and having honest conversations, we, we, and they're being honest, we should know, yeah. We, we got pretty good ideas.
How often does Bob come in?
So, um, because of COVID and he, he has having some health issues that he couldn't be around people. So he's through that. He's got a clean bill of health. Uh, he's getting monitored, you know, so every three months or so. But he's actually, uh, uh, we had a Zoom meeting with him two weeks ago. And we have a leadership academy coming up again, uh, to do that. So. Yeah, this year hired him as a consultant, not just for the, you know, one or two times a year. It's ongoing, uh, coaching.
So if you're one-on-one interviews and perhaps you are identifying someone that are working again, so then do they have a plan? Is there, uh?
Yeah, yeah. So though, you know, we, we, and it, and again, uh, uh, honest conversations are separate from being evaluative. But a lot of times, you know, they're having some of the same conversations, but yeah. Yeah, those are trying to.
Gathering data and then.
Right, separate from the evaluation or somebody that might be on an improvement plan or be more intensive coaching, et cetera. Yeah. Try to keep that separate. This is more for improving engagement. Um, but you know, like I said, there's one thing to change about my supervisor would be, and hopefully they tell you, say, Jeff, I wish you were X, Y, or Z, or I wish my teammates were X, Y, Z. And then, again, right? That's, it's part of being in leadership, but you say, all right, enough people. If you're the only one that said that, then we talk about why, but I say, yep, it seems to be a theme. And then, you know, again, if it's collaborative, what can we do? What suggestions do you have for improving that? And a lot of those, a lot of the action plans have literally come from the staff and their feedback.
So they're like, uh, point four, they're in this as well? So a point, like a point four.
Yeah, yep, yep. Not substitutes, um, not substitutes, um, not, you know, the, coaches that are just coaching, all right, they have to be, um.
Yeah. Yeah, but so if we sign a contract, that's point four.
Yeah, I don't know if I mean point four, but we have point.
I mean, whatever it is.
Yeah, yep. Yes, you know, in virtual or, all, all our staff are.
Generally score lower.
If they're not full-time.
Well, they don't, the, the benefits are different, uh, engagement just around.
Right.
Employment's different. So like, like, the contract is like different.
They have nationwide? Do they do nationwide just schools?
Yeah, that, that was asked. We, we, they, they don't have that data. No.
Cause I can imagine, like, my work would be way different. Or way different because.
Yeah.
I don't know. We're not in an office or anything.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't work and we have sixty-eight hundred employees that are assembling windows.
Similar to this.
Coming into it.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of the old, you know, you don't make a cow fatter by weighing it more, right? So it, you, you gotta weigh the cow, right? But it's, it's in the plan, right? The action plan is where the magic happens, right?
Anything else? Uh, next, the key word for our school board, uh, student, staff and community recognition.
So, uh, Sidney Burgess, some recognition, congratulations, Sidney, on a fourth place finish in the district of State Track Building. Congratulations. Congratulations on your performance at the state track meet, placed eleventh in the thirty-two-hundred meter run, fourteenth sixteen-hundred meter run. My encouraging, my awareness, amazing way to cap out your senior year at the state track meet. Congratulations on place six in the sixteen-hundred meter run, third in the thirty-two-hundred meter run. To Gretchen Rosenbaum, congratulations, Coach Okafor. For your track team on the performance of state championship, varsity was champs in the one A division and the novice team placed third in their division. In the one A division, many don't place third overall diversity females, and Brock Dawson tied for sixth overall diversity. Well done. Recognition of our district office staff, ladies who want to recognize your outstanding work on a spot on a annual hall, annual audit with no findings. Can't completely comprehend how many financial moving pieces and transactions happen in a two-year period, but along the entire year, who are appreciated. Uh, recognition, congratulations to our boys' golf team for their efforts and, of course, at the classroom last spring. G C W A recognized our team.
I don't know if, uh, we're at the Maya's graduation and then third, I think it was third grade or second grade. I don't remember which one it was. She wrote in there, like, in her little, like, memory book they had, like, I can run fast. Just like in this, like a little kid drawing, little, like, little kid writing. I was like, oh, self-awareness, apparently.
And that's everything in the elementary playground too. It's like, yeah, that's all about how fast you can run. It's. But it, yeah, it certainly, yeah, came true. Self-fulfilling prophecy.
Next discussion on future district needs and priorities. So at the meeting this Wednesday.
Auditorium.
Um, looks like there's a decent number signed up for it. Looks like we're actually a pretty good attendance. I have not had the best luck on some of my recruits. I'm going to try to re-recruit, uh, tomorrow again. To kind of get some respondents, but we'll see how that goes.
Yeah, let's count. There were twenty-six.
Yeah, and I, I will not be at that one. So. Won't be there, so.
We should.
Yeah, we should. Well, yeah, we can do that.
I think.
Yeah.
Video camera.
Inevitably.
Pretty sure I set that up. Double check.
As much as we ask them to, so.
Yeah. Um, so, yeah, the representatives from Olden, Olden Meyer will be running it. Randy LaFave and Jason Plot from Market Johnson and Ben Berry and, uh, Von Dirks from Wold. You know, they developed agenda, they're going to run it. They've got, again, tentative locations. We may be moving them around based on tours, et cetera, things like that. Probably just the kickoff will be in the auditorium. Then after that, it'll be like libraries where you can have more small group breakout. But this was gonna be the first one I thought was best for that, just to more of a sit and get type of thing, the first meeting. Potentially do a C T tour of our current facilities. So, yeah, hopefully everybody can make it. Um, but, yeah, get that recorded.
And I'm sure, I'm sure we're going to probably hear, it's not the right time with Frederick Mallard. It's, uh, I mean, last year wasn't the right time. This year isn't the right time. Will next year be the right time? Cause there's a development coming. Again, I, I don't know if there's ever a perfect time.
So it's going to be a group that thinks it's not the right time.
Yeah, and, and just, I don't know, just the, the thing that, like, when we do a project like this at work, we always talk about future-proofing the thought process about like, when you do an addition, how do you account for any future that, like, don't block yourself in. But again, just getting past this first one will be the big hurdle, getting everybody headed in the right direction.
Yep. And secondly, in terms of, uh, survey, Peter Lutherman and I have been in touch. Uh, we've, uh, working on getting together the next two weeks, he said, finding dates at work, but, uh, to start, uh, our work on the, on that survey. Obviously, it has to coincide with the timing of the, a community task force, et cetera. But, um, we at least want to have the preliminary meeting to start talking about the planning and drafting some of the questions. At least we can draft without, you know, uh, the work of the task force. So that's also been, uh, being done, uh, parallel to the other work. And then in the future, uh, kind of along those lines, um, necessarily referendum-related, but big picture related. Brian Brewer and, and Jen and I are working on refinancing another, uh, group of, uh, bonds. So, uh, rates are low. So he'll be coming in the next few months with another recommendation to save the taxpayers more money. That's a good thing.
Sorry. And that's the core agenda items, annual summary report, learning behavior trends and recommendations.
Um, so I get, clearly I get to come in front of you guys and get these two, um, reports. The first one is our annual summary of our bullying we've achieved within the district. The numbers are significantly low, um, which is good. And I just, just to remind you guys that bullying really becomes, that's the, the verbal, the type of bullying, um, associated bullying, but bullying has to be the definition, I think. Who are bullying is during all their life. But, um, for community, it was definitely included, um, as a symptom of behavior in this report. It has to be repeated and it has to have an impact of color. Though it's not those, those conflicts between kids that kids define as bullying or something, it has to happen over a period of time. Um, and those goals get documented here, uh, in this report. I give you five years of data here, so, um, based on from school to school. If, if you look at the elementary, um, I'll take that one from the beginning in two thousand sixteen and seventeen, it looked like there was twenty-three, uh, incidents of bullying. The definition has changed a little bit since then, so, um, you won't see near as many because it, again, that, that's where we really focused. Repeated, um, in order for it to be divided. Um, this year we're reporting one incident that meets the criteria of bullying at the high school. It was a cyber, I, I break it down and it was a cyberbullying incident, which resulted, um, in an in-school suspension. Um, it was a student-to-student incident. That's, and that's all the information I get and then I can also share as well. Um, but this, these numbers, the low numbers on this, I think, is really cool to our sponsors of across the district because of the character education they do and all they work, uh, they do with the students and the less. There's not much else. Uh, there's some, some recommendations continuing to collect data, um. And then, this has always been a recommendation, is, um, making current training available, but it's kind of gone to the wayside over, uh, COVID. To have any, uh, like, but I think that's something, um, at least the increase in numbers that you certainly want to happen. Questions on that one?
Do you feel that the data reflects reality with the change in back mission? Do you think it's underreporting or is there still bullying that one incident that we're dealing with that doesn't meet the?
I think it's an accurate reflection of our district. I mean, in the behavior of our students in the district. I think that the definition of bullying being that it is repeated does limit to that number. But, you know, one, I think, sometimes it's somebody who sees something as bullying, um, and it happens one time. And apparently we use that word very commonly. Um, I think having it, we have repeated, uh, having the word repeated in the definition kind of helps that. Um, I'm not sure that the number, uh, I think the numbers will, and I think that's, but I think it's also an accurate reflection of what the lawyers.
And do you have the, I'm assuming there are situations where we just don't like, like, we don't allow it to escalate to that.
Correct. And again, that's kudos to the council or principals and guardians that, you know, stop it after, and address it after one incident.
Pete a couple of times, being aware of some things and it's gone really well. So like, kudos. Like, I know, like, I'm sure you stopped a couple of those from escalating, so.
We do our best. Yeah, you know, a lot of the times what, uh, the initial infraction and, and what happens, it doesn't go undocumented, but for instance, if there is a case that's brought forward, sometimes it goes into our system as harassment for the first time. If it was to continue, then it would spiral into those other, but, you know, we work really hard re-teaching and trying to, uh, get all parties to understand what's going on, so we can prevent it from going into that level.
The second record I have for you is our annual, um, seclusion, right, and by law, uh, by October first, we have to receive this report. Um, on the, uh, number of seclusions or strengths that we want to give to the district. I always like to point out on board that it is not illegal to do a seclusion and it is not illegal to do a restraint. It is how you do it and, um, the training you have and how you report it. Because there are times that students' behavior weren't, um, being restrained, restrained for us to visit. And typically, not always, but typically those are our special ed kids and we know that. And it's part of the behavior plan they're written into. So the words sometimes, um, are shocking and alarming to people. But, uh, truly, um, the numbers within this district are significantly low. And again, you get a five-year, um, there's actually six years on here. Incident, um, numbers of incidents that have occurred. If you look back to two thousand fourteen and some of those, we know that in our district, we had some significantly meeting students within our district and that was part of the behavior plan, um, that was implemented there for, uh, a student. Uh, just, just to kind of clarify that a seclusion really is the invalid. Um, uh, just, just to kind of clarify that a seclusion really is the invalid, they must be not allowed to physically, physically be stopped from leaving where they are. So they can be placed in a room for a time off to cool off, as long as they're allowed to leave willingly, that's not considered a seclusion. They have to physically be uh, stopped from from being, being able to leave that room or what that space, otherwise it's not technically considered a seclusion. Uh, we have five seclusions and four restraints that occurred within our district. Um, they were all special ed students that were done and they were all documented properly. Um, for physical restraints that we had, uh, for. Not within the building and there was two students, they were all, they were two specific students. Questions on that report? These numbers here do get documented, just so you know with the. Yeah.
Right, uh, other, uh, we have the the fall regional meeting, seven o'clock on October twelfth, twenty twenty one. Um, and then the state convention uh, in January again, so just encouragement again to.
It has been, and they went virtual.
It was gonna be in person or virtual or something.
I'm not.
I've attended certain. Interesting.
It'll, yeah, it's, it'll be on the W S P website. And then, yeah, as far as the convention, again, just putting on your radar and thinking about it, if you're, you know, thinking about it, um, uh, we took the the reservations and the and registration typically opens in October, if I remember right. So we want to be ready for that and uh, the the registration itself isn't a big deal, but getting hotel rooms is. So we'll want to make those reservations soon as possible.
And then do you have to attend every day? I'm just trying to think of a question.
No, no, it's a good question.
Couple of one, two.
Yeah, yeah, you, you can only make one day, that's, I mean, you pay the same registration, I think, for the whole conference. But if I think one day is better than none, that's what works in your schedule.
Yeah. And then the important upcoming dates, a lot of task force meetings. Next month, uh, two meetings again next month for the fiscal board, uh, something I'd like to put on the agenda for the board learning and special meetings. That one is possibly what could meetings look like or what do we think our schedule could be if we could get down to one and just have that discussion a little bit in that meeting um, for that one. And then, uh, again, task force and then the regular meeting at the end of the month, so just kind of take advantage of the the meeting on the thirteenth for that.
So I'll make a note of that, Cali, um, what kind of words, Smith, what what you think that agenda item should should say?
Optimize.
There you go.
I've got a whole bunch of them for that. Opportunities. So um, with that, does anyone have anything else before we go on to close session? After read the close session, actually, I was totally didn't have to do that.
You didn't go.
Okay, I'll do it, okay. Pro Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion. Uh, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Um, and then superintendent performance review and then consideration for some end of employment offer. On the.
So again, hi, hi, hi.
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 Hi.